Uh, meeting called to order uh on September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Councilman, can you give us an invocation?
Sure.
Please stand if you're able.
I think the the timing is always good for to ask for peace, whether it's for the world, it's for the United States, for the state of Texas, or for the city of Odessa. So please join me in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we opened our work session today by seeking your peace. You are the source of all peace, and in you we find order, for you are the author of harmony. Help us work to accomplish great things for our city of Odessa. Guide our thoughts and decisions, grant us wisdom to shape our city, where all can live safely, benefit from strong schools, excellent healthcare, and a myriad of thriving businesses. And lastly, watch over our citizens and department employees, and grant your peace to our emergency responders as they answer their calls with courage and compassion, guided by integrity and by antithesis. In your name, the great I am, we pray. Amen.
All right, agenda item number three, invite the International Cultural Festival. Yes, sir. How are you?
Good. Thank you, thank you for having me here. And my name is Ork Ork Rice. I'm local businessman last twenty-five years, but at the same time, I'm volunteering for nonprofit Peace Academy of West Texas. I do their outreach and, you know, event coordination. So today I'm here for the Cultural Festival for the second year. And last year we did some collaboration with this city and also some nonprofits run. This year we are making this one a little bit bigger. Let me see, okay, it's there. So in West Texas, Odessa Midland holds more than forty different cultures. So we try to bring those cultures together to our community. So if you guys see on the slide also why this festival is matter. Number one, build stronger community connection. Second is to boost city pride and reputation, protect shares, cultures, and heritage, and support local artists, business, and then the youth. And so we are doing some local partners. Culture, we walked through almost thirty-five different cultures. And they are willing to join our, you know, the Cultural Festival this year, hopefully, if they don't change. At the same time, we are collaborating with Odessa College. And Thursday, we we have a meeting with the Lions Club. We're gonna join there, you know, the session, and some nonprofits, some, you know, the churches and the youth group, they're gonna join our group. So we, it's gonna be a large variety of the, you know, the Odessa community will join our Cultural Festival. Not only that, but also some local business, and we're gonna partnership with with them. And the festival goal is the community unity, cultural heritage, art and creativity, city branding. And I don't know about the tourism and economy right now, but this this one is our second year. So education and dialogue and respect, that's our festival goals this year. And expected impact is, last year it was small scale, thirteen different culture attended. This year we are expecting that one thirty-five plus. So over fifteen hundred people are, yeah, we are expecting on that Cultural Festival. And so there are two hundred volunteers, so mostly it's the youth. So we can teach them the, you know, the, we are not just the city hub, the energy hub. We are also, you know, the cultural background. Our city is has more than one culture. So we'll bring all those cultures together. So benefit to Odessa, I think most of the people think when they come outside of the town, last twenty-five, twenty-five years, I'm in this town, and they think that we are just, you know, the oil town. We don't have anything else, middle of the desert. But we have, again, we are holding the large quantity of different cultures, different backgrounds. And so benefit to Odessa is a stronger community spirit, and also better city reputation in Texas, because we are far away from the other big cities. And then more opportunities for our students and our families, so they can enjoy the, you know, the, beside the, you know, the just the work, they can join some activities in town. So what we, why I'm here today, today, number one, we would like to, again, if you guys approve, we would like to do the city cooperation together this year again. The second is, of course, when I was talking to Norma, when I asked the appointment, I asked if city, I mean, we don't ask the financial first, but if city has some tents, you know, if they can, you know, let us to use the tents, so we can use the city's tents, so we can bring back, however we took it. But if possible, if, and I asked John.
What?
Yeah. So he said he has only four tents. So it's not enough, we need thirty-five different tents for each culture. Each, you know, the background will represent their, you know, the culture. So on that tent, we'll hang their flags, we'll hang their banners, their countries, backgrounds, origin, so they can bring the tea, coffee, dessert, and then their dance and their taste, and their dress to the, you know, the cultural area, the festival area. So if possible, you know, the some small, small financial can help on that one, of course, that's your approval. Also, I won't say that I need this much, this much, but anything, you just, you guys just add on it, we are appreciated for that one. So the basically, I know you guys are working really close with the also city communities. The another reason I'm here is because our community at least wanted to meet our leaders. Thanks to Craig a couple times, thank you, you know, the Gilbert and the Craig also, they joined the our some events, but they would like to meet with y'all, they would like to, you know, to discuss, they would like to introduce themselves to to y'all, so they they wanna see if you guys can join one of our, you know, the gatherings, so you guys can introduce yourself to our community. So again, thank you for, you know, the, your time to having me here. I know it's fast, I don't know if you guys understood my English, but mainly it's, I'm here last twenty-five years again, and I raised my six kids over here. So I would like to see the, you know, the, we are bonding together, we are, you know, the joining as a community, we are helping each other, and we are understanding each other. So that's the purpose I'm here, and thank you for having me here.
Thank you. What's the date of the event? I didn't see.
Oh, okay. It was on the October twenty-fifth at four P M. to eight P M.
Okay, gotcha.
I thought it was there.
Go ahead. Gilbert like to ask a couple of questions.
Ork, remind me, this is your third or fourth year to do this?
It's as big festival wise, we we used to do at U T P B as the International Students' Day, we were joining as community, and we were helping them out. But last year we did Lions Club, Odessa City, and our community did it together. So this year is gonna be one of the largest and, you know, the more advanced.
And in your, one of your screens, you mentioned that the benefits to Odessa Midland, do you also present this effort to the Midland City Council?
First, I'm here, and definitely I have to go and do that one too, because half of the culture is from there. They're gonna join from the Midland to here.
Yeah. And one final question. Do you know if this event in times, in years past, has it brought in outsiders that would stay and spend the night at our hotels, motels?
Uh, no. It's basically most of the time for our, you know, the local communities, because it's not the, I mean, there are some couple of friends come from Lubbock and El Paso, but it's not the, you know, the, you can count on it that there are large quantity.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just had a comment Gilbert asked in the same question. Uh, no, if if y'all have not been to one of the Peace Academies events, they're, the diversity is incredible, the food's incredible, the camaraderie, I've always enjoyed it, and they would be happy to have you to one of their brunches. I would highly encourage that. I I have switched to tea from coffee, I would caution that, but I appreciate the hospitality, and I'm glad this is something that is going to continue.
Great, thank you. So every Wednesday, as business owners, so Peace Academy sponsoring, and it's in my business place, in my business office, we invite the friends, we have the brunch together, not only y'all, but you know, whoever, of course, they are welcome to, you know, to join us on that brunch, of course. At the end, we have a Turkish coffee for just talk.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We can't take action, but thank you very much. We'll add it to the agenda for next week, uh, next meeting. Thank you, sir. All right, let's go to, I'm agenda item, agenda item four, discuss bid award for French Avenue reconstruction from East Highway eighty to Brittany Lane. Yvonne.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is to discuss award of bid for French Avenue reconstruction from East Highway eighty to Brittany Lane. The bids for this project were opened on August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, and two responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest, lowest responsive bidder was Riz Albert in the amount of six hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and one cent. Bids are within budgeted amount of the project. And this is a full-depth reconstruction project, and the purpose is to, the purpose of this project is to install approximately one thousand square yards of eight-inch reinforced concrete flume, and the project will include the replacement of six, four thousand square yards of asphalt adjacent to the concrete. The project will improve the port drainage, roadway drainage, and we are anticipating completing the project within ninety working days. And the funds are available in the Street Division Maintenance of Infrastructure account, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Yvonne, how long is the job gonna take?
Ninety, ninety working days.
Ninety working, when do you expect it to start?
Um, starting probably within a month.
Within a month?
Yes, after all, after the award, we need some time to execute the contract, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions? And thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, number five, discuss bid award for the reconstruction of Eighth Street and Dixie. Yvonne, you're back on the stage.
The bids for this project were opened on August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, and two responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was Riz Albert in the amount of one million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Bids are within budgeted amount for the project. This is a full-depth reconstruction project, and the purpose of this project is to install approximately thirty-three hundred square yards of eight-inch reinforced concrete at the intersection. The project will include the replacement of fifty-five hundred square yards of asphalt adjacent to the concrete, and improved pedestrian crossing at the intersection. We are anticipating completing the project within one hundred twenty working days. And the funds are available in the following accounts, Street Division Maintenance of Infrastructure Account and Roadway Impact Fee Service Area Two. So I'll be happy to answer your questions.
I had a question on the Maple. I know I heard at one point maybe there was a discussion on either a median there or something, does this address any of that? The turning left or right off of Maple onto Eight?
No.
Okay.
This is just the intersection.
Just intersection.
Yeah, you're going back with concrete?
It is asphalt right now, yes, we are installing concrete.
On concrete.
Reinforced eight-inch concrete.
They're already working on it, 'cause I swear there was a, it's Atmos.
Oh, that's Atmos.
And it is utilities, they are replacing the water line before we replace the concrete.
Thank you.
Do have a pleasure.
Yeah.
Yvonne, do you have any improvements on the pedestrian crossing at that intersection?
Yes, we are fixing some, some pedestrian access. To make it safer.
Wonderful here.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? And thank you very much, we appreciate your time. Agenda item number six, discuss authorizing the city manager execute a three-year renewal agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute. Edgar.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to discuss a resolution authorizing the city, as you read, the summary. The proposed three-year renewals of a small government enterprise agreement with E S R I, as it's called, will provide the city of Odessa with a comprehensive access to R G S software, including R G S Online, R G S Enterprise, and a full suite of advanced extensions and user license. The agreement valued at two hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred, over the term of ninety thousand, three hundred annually, enables unlimited deployment of G I S tools across departments, and is budgeted annually under the software maintenance. Esri software is essential to the city's geointelligence, supporting the, I lost my spot, supporting delivery of critical mapping service planners to leadership, developers, and citizens. It provides vital geospatial data to departments such as emergency communications, first responders, planning, code enforcement, building inspections, utilities, and the list goes on with all the departments. The last agreement was executed in twenty twenty-two for a similar term, and E S R I remains the sole source provider for this licensing. This renewal ensures continued technical support, access to the updates, and the ability to schedule G I S operations citywide efficiently and effectively. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I do.
You do, okay.
Yeah.
Counsel.
The Fine Print on that, it looks like that software, why don't you get it? Boy, that's probably the, one of the main softwares that you use. But my question is, Fine Print says that they can be shared with other departments? Do, currently is it shared with like development, or is there anything?
Yes, the the entire city is able to access any license, that's the beauty of it.
Gotcha.
Unlimited on cap licensing.
Excellent.
Uh, so if we were to give the advanced license to any, of all the three, I would say all the departments, engineering, planning, us, anybody needs to map.
Very good.
In some sort of fashion or analyze. It's all cord up with us, the analysis and the mapping, but we're always able to give to them.
Thank you for that clarification, yes.
And it picks up the R G S Online and the portal, so it just keeps us open and active to the public, to the citizens, anybody that needs this data.
I had a, Councilman Stoker, I have a question, thank you. So on Lubbock's website, one of my favorite things is they've got their transparency page, and one of those items is is from the same people. So would this allow us to have the same kind of information on our website where, like, this is solid waste, and they're, they, I mean, I guess reporting up to the?
Absolutely, have you gone to our site?
I have, I don't know where you would find it on ours like this.
Okay, so yes, we can get some of that data on our, as far as, you're talking statistics?
Yeah.
Yeah. What is the statistics that you're you're seeing there?
Well, this one is residential solid waste, fourteen thousand, two hundred eighty-nine tons collected in April of two thousand and five. There's a fire page, a police page.
Okay.
A code enforcement page where the tickets are filed. It kind of like taking Team Odessa and.
Yes.
Being able to see where all the tickets are filed, and.
Yes, we can do that.
I think that helps tell the story of, you know, you you get pushback every now and then about code enforcement's not out there doing anything. Well, yeah, they are.
Yes, sir. The fact that C Click Fix or Team Odessa is relatively new, and it's collecting data right now, but we can take the R G I S extension that they have, and we can add it to our maps. I didn't put it in just yet because C Click Fix has his own map.
Right. Why, but I'm talking about like the different departments, like solid waste or O P D O F R, like, how many runs did they go on last month? I mean, that that information that, you know, I think is interesting, other people may not, but.
Yes.
I didn't know if that was part of this. Okay, thank you.
I think you've got insomnia.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes, sir. Keith?
Do you, do you know where this Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated is located, what state?
It is in California.
Yeah, I just want a word of caution. We're seeing these roll in from New York, California, you name it. And you read their proposals and state laws wherever they're located, venues, wherever, and it's, these proposals, I'm not saying this one, most, the ones we're seeing are very one-sided. And we have, yeah, and we've stopped a lot of them, and they're, and we're looking at them, and so if you hear, you know, we're road blocking them, we just, we're, we, our city attorney's office, we're not signing off on, we gotta go to California and try a lawsuit. Now, if they wanna bring it to the council, and y'all wanna do it, it's fine, we work for y'all. But I'm just telling you, we're we're seeing some of these, and they are just extremely one-sided, and we're not signing off on them, I'm, we're just sending them back.
Yeah, I think we're alluding to Edgar's that that these contracts, they they always wanna be suited there, like, for example, Los Angeles, California, venues in Los Angeles, state law applies to California. What we're basically asking our city attorney to do is all contracts. Venue needs to be in Odessa, Texas, Exeter County, and the law that applied is Texas. So many of these are just so one-sided in terms of our software package in particular, they just, they're just worded in such way that it's a hundred percent in for the software company and zero for the city. We're trying to level the playing field at least somewhat, so.
Yes.
You may get a little pushback, they may not, they may agree, we'll see.
There has been pushback, and then, and it's going back and forth, it's, we've put two out already, and it's come back twice. The the thing is that we, this is, this is software that we've had since, I mean, the the company itself is, since nineteen ninety-eight, the the agreements that we have going on in twenty, twenty-ten, this is just licensing to keep the lights on. October seventh, if this is not resolved, they turn it off. We've been doing this since, I've been working on this for ninety days. And so, yes, October, October seventh would be the end of this.
Are there other software companies that provide similar situated?
No, this is sole source.
Is this the only one in the nation, or just the only one?
Well, this is definitely, if I, if I step back, the city of Lubbock, Abilene, Fort Worth, you name it, they have this software. This is a standard, this is the Nike of of mapping software. Not only that, the the U S government, the military, they all have this, we're interconnected with all of that. It creates, they have, and it's a superb agreement, in that we're paying this this amount of money, and when we do the money of how much we've installed, we can, we can say that we've installed almost one point two million worth of data and services, and they're charging us ninety thousand a year. So right there in itself. Yes, I understand Mr. Strutter and what he's, and I agree with what he's, what he's asking, it's just work, this is, there's no work scope, there's no, Esri's not coming. All I, all we need is for the license agreement to continue forward. We've had them, we've never had any issues as far as any type of litigation or whatever, any issues, any of that. I understand what he's saying, we, there's things that are, yes, we're not going to lend the license to somebody that's outside the city of of Odessa, and that's, that would be one of those kind of things. We have never crossed that to to be able to say that we gave a license to somebody else, and they're editing and not, not paying or not paying for it. It's always stayed just within the city.
Doesn't hurt to push back and ask, and if they say no, we'll address it.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. All right, Claudia, agenda item seven, discuss bid award for K O B digital sign located eight fourteen West Forty-second Street to Blink Signs.
Good afternoon. Yes, this digital sign will be located in front of our facility at eight fourteen West Forty-second. The digital sign will serve as a communication tool to display real-time information to the public, including announcements, safety messages, community events, and departmental updates. The investment aims to improve public outreach, enhancing, enhance visibility, and modernize the department's external communications with a durable, weather-resistant, and energy-efficient solution. The bids for K O B digital sign, the contractor bid twenty, number twenty-five, fifty-three seventy-one nineteen were open to the, to the bidders on August twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. So the best value was for Blink Signs at eighty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine, seventy. And one of the concerns that we have at our facility is that I wanted to explore, this is a sign here up here, I'm sorry, that we have at our facility is that we have several services and programs that we have available to our community, and we still have citizens saying they don't know that that's there. So we are confident that with a sign like this, that at a major tariff, that people will see it. And we're big on digital, I mean, we do social media, we we do all that, but I still feel that we're not reaching a certain percentage of our community, and this will help with that. I understand it's, it's expense and expense, but I feel that it would be, it would have its return of investment.
Thanks, Claudia. Questions, Counsel?
Is, um, the option there, A, is that the monument?
No, that's B.
That's the digital sign. I'm sorry.
The pylon.
The pi, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
So this is the pylon.
It's a pylon, and it's double-sided, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. It's double-sided.
I believe you're talking about option B, the monument sign that's on the ground? Is that slide in here?
I don't think so, because the one we selected was option A.
Was A?
Uh, the option B, yeah, because option B, because of visibility, at where we at, you could not see it, that that option is the one. And actually, option B was more, it was higher, it was at ninety-one thousand, I believe, so, so, yeah, this is a better visibility, and it's less than the the other one.
Can I ask, I mean, I see Blink was eighty, let me call it eighty-nine thousand.
Right.
And United was seventy-nine, what, and, you know, Alpha Graphics and others in Odessa, explain the, how you got there, that's all I'm asking.
Yes, well, definitely the ones, the other ones were not, they're not in our reach, but the eighty, the seventy-nine thousand, the same thing, it was the visibility, it was not gonna be where we at, again, people were not gonna see it driving by. So this was the best value, Blink.
Any other counsel?
Claudia, how many of these companies that bid are local? All of them?
Alpha Graphics and United Signs, I believe, yes.
And the others are outsiders?
Yes. In fact, Blink Signs is from Ohio.
I did have one too, just, just out of curiosity, on Forty-second Street, pulling into, keep what is a beautiful, is that, you looking at it on the east side or the right?
Let me get it into my, yeah, look in it, yes.
The left side or the right side?
Going westbound, it would be on your right side.
Okay.
Yes.
I I think it's an incredible idea.
It actually.
I can hardly wait to see it, bud.
Yeah, I think it would help a lot, and it would be right before you get into that tunnel. It's gonna be there, and it's gonna be a good visibility, people are actually gonna see it when they drive by.
Just wanted to say, and I expressed this to you the other night, my concern is that we have several of these big giant digital billboards around town that don't follow our ordinance. They don't, they don't follow the rules with their displays, and I know it's been brought up before, those ones by us are playing movies and flashing, and they're very distracting. And so I I just wanna make sure that, you know, if if this does go up, it follows the rules, that it's within the ordinance, we don't follow our sign ordinance at all much. So I just wanna make sure it's maintained, that if a panel goes out, it gets fixed, you know, it 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 just has the, you you come by these that when one of the panels fails, and it just, I mean, they just look terrible. So, you know, hopefully maintenance and the future operation of it is considered, I just, I don't wanna spend a bunch of money on it that, you know, in two years, half of it's broken.
And I completely understand, and that's what I share with you as well, I, yeah, that's not our, we, we're, we believe that what we tell our communities, what we do internally. So, yes, we, that's one of the things, we beautify our communities, so we will make sure that that's, you know, following ordinance.
Okay, anything else, Counsel? Thank you, Claudia, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's move to agenda item number eight, discuss fuel provider contract, an amendment to the contract, Aaron.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, just wanted to bring this contract in front of you. I know that we did go out for R F P. at one time for fuel, however, I don't find that the actual final contract ever made it back to a council for execution. There are some issues, in my opinion, in the contract, particularly with requiring minimum fuel purchases, being an exclusive provider. And then, of course, there is still some work they need to do that would comply with code. And I believe that this this amendment that's in front of you would help address those issues with the current contract. So I just wanted you all to be aware. So, I just wanted you all to be aware of it, um, let you know that we'll, if, if, if the direction from council is to move forward at this time, we'll do that, and then we'll see what they say to these changes, and then bring it back to you for final execution.
Mayor Aaron and I have visited about this numerous times. If we had a clean slate, we wouldn't be here, but we don't. And so, we're just making the best we can out of the situation with this, with this amendment, and, uh, so, we're gonna bring it back to you, and it's the best, it's the best we think we can do.
Gotcha. How long is it, I'm trying to find it, how long is this contract board, the original?
Upon execution, it's two years.
Two years, so it's over in twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
When did we put that out? April twenty-fourth is when you signed the contract.
Yeah, well, it's odd.
I think this probably, roughly two years ago, let's say.
So, there were all kinds of issues with the tanks being set wrong. Has it all been corrected?
Not, not yet, they're getting closer, uh, however, uh, I've withheld roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, somewhere around there, until those are, uh, exactly the way they should be, and they are put in per code.
Yeah, but the, the last time we looked, they weren't even close.
Right, again, I think they're getting, they're getting closer, but, uh, at the same time, we're not gonna, we're not gonna cut a check for the remainder until we're completely satisfied.
I don't think we sign a contract till we get them fixed. Counselor?
We're on the same page, Mr. Thompson, we, we understand, and, uh, but like I said, uh, mayor, uh, uh, you know, we're just not starting from a clean slate, but we're gonna do the best we can, and, and Mr. Thompson's right. Until we get that issue resolved, we're not moving forward, and we're sure not issuing a check.
Yeah, okay.
But I just, I just wanted to, I mean, I think Aaron's doing the best he can.
All right, well, Pierce, from my reading, this, this contract was signed April twenty-fourth of twenty-four, so if it's two-year contract, we got April twenty-sixth. Thank you, Aaron, we appreciate it, we agree with the, uh, your course of action. Absolutely. All right, don't move a muscle, Aaron. Agenda item nine, Discuss Ports to Plains Alliance Membership.
I think, uh, this was brought, uh, several of you have been familiar with Ports to Plains and have, uh, maybe recently, or been reintroduced to Ports to Plains, so, uh, wanted to just bring you, bring your attention as a, as the council completely, and of course, the public, about, uh, what is Ports to Plains Alliance, uh, what do they do, uh, and quite frankly, it's an advocacy group, right? It's an advocacy group that, uh, is, um, uh, supporting and, uh, bringing attention to, and hopefully bringing, um, money to projects to complete what is the Ports to Plains Corridor, uh, that actually stretches throughout the heartland of the US, right? Goes all the way from, uh, North Dakota to, uh, down to the, down to the, down to the border. Uh, its goal is to be a corridor that bisects the entire heartland of the country, uh, so that we can bring energy products to market and agricultural products to market. Um, a long way to go still with this, but a lot of work has been done. Um, it ultimately connects even further than that, going up to the oil fields in Edmonton, Alberta, down to the ports of Mazelon. Uh, so, it's a huge corridor, again, with the, with the purpose of bringing economic prosperity, uh, to our community and our region, our nation, again, by connecting, uh, these areas of the country and North America, quite frankly, uh, again, for agriculture and energy, uh, products. Uh, some folks that are members of it already, as you know, the city of Midland is. Um, in fact, you've got the mayor of San Angelo on there, um, mayor of Midland, mayor of Lubbock, these are all people on their board, just to give you a few. Uh, in fact, the mayor of Amer, uh, I think I said mayor of Amarillo as well, county judge in, um, Lubbock County, just to name a few.
The, uh, I brought this up in part because I recently was, uh, assigned to the, uh, I twenty-seven Advisory Council, and Odessa was not a part of it until August. And, and they've been planning roads and the future of roads across Texas for many years, and we not had a seat at the table, in the same way with Ports to Plains. We're being bypassed for our lack of activity in these organizations and in these groups, and, and, uh, it's a problem. Need to see at the table, need to have our own advocacy groups there, supporting a more westerly, uh, bypass of some of the I fourteen, the I twenty-seven, all these different, there's north-south corridors being built and considered, although they're, we're talking five, ten, twenty, thirty years out. So, some of these are long-term, but, but you still have to be part of the group to have input into the decision-making. And so, um, I think, I strongly advise us to consider moving in this, uh, moving to approve this membership, so we can be part of the group, be part of the discussion, and try to develop better westerly routes that don't, that don't bypass Odessa and Abilene County. So, anyway, I wanna bring that up to everyone's attention, uh, and so, we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda for discussion and action, okay?
We have, and it's probably, I, I need to apologize to the council, because the MPO, I, we've been looking at twenty-seven and fourteen for the two years I've been on the MPO, and, and, you know, that, that's all going on, but as far as this, joining this coalition, of course, that has nothing to do with it, except that our MPO encompasses Midland, Odessa, and our district, and, uh, so, uh, we don't really have a, we have a little voice at the table, but, you know, that all comes through textod, of course, and, uh, we should've been in this, one of these conversations a long time ago, because I remember when it first popped up, our friend Mike George was chairman of the chamber, and he was very instrumental in getting us into that, and, uh, the debate was trying to see where that road was gonna go, which we were hoping it was gonna go, if my memory serves me correctly, and I'm sure I'll get a phone call if it doesn't, that it was gonna go down seventeen eighty-eight because of the airport, that was the whole idea.
Correct.
Yeah, and then from there south, but, uh, well, that's been a long time ago.
Yeah, and then it slowly moved easterly until it went right through Big Spring, San Angelo, Big Spring, Lubbock, and now we've been able to get, we call that the eastern route and a western route through part of Midland County. We're gonna barely miss it, but we can build some feeder, we have, we have other ideas to get, uh, Ector County and Odessa better connected. But, again, starts with, we gotta be involved.
We gotta be involved.
And we missed the, we missed some of the boat, we're gonna jump on it now and make a lot of, a lot of action, so. Thank you, Aaron, for bringing that up, and, and I want to encourage everyone to really consider this when it's on the agenda, because I think it will, it, it will help us be a better advocate for our area.
Right. So, if anybody's going down I twenty and you get to the big, to the, uh, Sterling City turnoff, uh, that's a bridge to nowhere, that comes from the north, and there's no road on the north side of it. And because they already, that's how far ahead of us they already are, they've got that overpass built, goes over twenty right down to Sterling City, so.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say that, um, related to that too, that the inland port concept has proven to be a very successful model, too. We have them in other places, and they're functioning just well.
Now, I think that's another discussion that absolutely, this area needs an inland port, we need a rail station here in Odessa, because we're located on, on the east-west corridor on I twenty, and we're halfway between the east coast and the west coast, and there's a big gap between, say, Dallas and El Paso to the Los Angeles, and so, that's something I want this council to also consider along with ODC, is that we need that investment. Uh, Craig has brought up to me that, as a, as a part of that concept, gigantic coal storage. So, these grocery stores like HEB and United have a place for their, for us to transit from and through, and so, we have a lot of ideas. Hopefully, we can continue that discussion and bring it to fruition. It takes time, but I mean, put it on the, on the calendar, put it on the, our minds to discuss, and try to find a plan for that.
Well, Presidio's already widened their bridge crossing, so now we have that. It's shorter route from Presidio to Odessa than it is to Midland, San Angelo, or anyplace else. This should be where it comes.
Plus, you have a gigantic Minnetonka community south in Oneaga, as well as in Seminole, that goes right up the three eighty-five corridor. So, fourteen is gonna miss us, and, but, we need a, basically, call it I twenty-nine, really from that road up to join us through to Lubbock. That's my goal. At least, I want it on everyone's idea, that's a, that's a viable route, it ought to be better enforced, better thought out.
Orlan Highway, already built, all the way to McCamey right now, so.
We need some bypasses and overpasses, and we got it.
So, we already have three eighty-five built that way, so it doesn't take much to take a right-hand turn and join this, so.
Well, we do have it, twenty-seven and fourteen both coming through here, they, we have a reliever route coming on fourteen over this direction.
Yeah, but rather than reliever, I thought we're not gonna stay.
I, I get it, I, I get it.
Right.
Only so much I can do, Cal.
Well, we have great ideas, thank you, Aaron.
Yeah.
Better than nothing.
That's right, yeah.
All right, Keith. Agenda item ten, Discuss Request by Arrington Oil and Gas, operate to drill skinny hole well number one on approximately one point two-six acres of land at a corner of Jefferson Avenue and East Second Street in Odessa, Texas.
We have representatives from Arrington Oil and Gas here, and they'd like to make a, a brief presentation to the council, and then we have our oil and gas attorney, Steve Posick, is gonna come up and address any questions the council may have.
There you go.
Mayor and members of council, thank you, I'm Chris Hall with Arrington Oil and Gas. Uh, was asked by Mr. Stretcher to come and talk to y'all briefly about a permit we'd like to submit to our skinny hole number one well. And this is a, a science well, this is a well we do not wanna complete, we need to drill for some, to collect some data. Be located at Jefferson Avenue and East Second Street. We own, bought some surface there, about, uh, approximately one point two-six acres, that we own the surface on, and want to drill some wells, I think we've already come back, talked to the city a while back, and leased your minerals on a unit that we're planning to drill, our Optimus Prime unit. And it's gotta be south of town, just out, just south of I twenty, note, going north for three miles. Problem with drilling this well is there is not much, uh, well control around the area to know where the formation goes. And so that we can drill the best wells possible, we need to have data to know where the wells go. That'll maximize the royalties for everybody, all the homeowners, royalty minerals in there, including, you know, city of Odessa, Ector County ISD, Ector County, so, you know, big benefit to Odessa. But to do that, we need to have some data to make sure we can steer the well and stay in zone the map, but, you know, maximize the return. You know, know that this is a little unique, and that it's, it is inside the city limits with there. Um, for that, this is, um, Arrington Oil and Gas has done, has been drilling in the city of Midland. You might go out by Air Park over Midland, you've seen about thirty-five wells that we've drilled right there by the Air Park. Those actually were drilled and completed, but, you know, have gone through the city of Midland and done quite a bit of learning. Okay, what is, what's unique with the city of Midland, what's unique when drilling in the city, and what are those concerns, and how can we address those concerns? So, part of the plan, as you look through what I have given y'all, was our application that we, uh, turned, gave to, uh, Mr. Steve Posick, who was, I think, helping y'all out with this. And, you know, some of the concerns, you know, kind of, I know the three main concerns always is, you know, noise, lights, traffic, are kind of the three concerns. So, as you kind of look through there, what you'll see is, we've talked about building a twenty-four-foot sound wall all the way around the location. That is, you know, will minimize the noise. The lights, we've done halo lights, they are focused down, these are not big floodlights, these are halo lights that are focused down. You know, like I said, back in what we've, our experience that we've had so far is, we're drilling within, you know, in some cases, you know, less than two hundred feet from a home, and they have had no complaints with it. It is not, you know, the sound, they haven't had any problems, or the lights. You know, they said actually, um, road traffic is worse than what we've done. So, um, and I, the last, the third one we were talking about was traffic. One of the things that we've talked about, while I said Second Street, we're gonna have where no one enters, all traffic for coming in and out of location would be on Third Street. You know, but that is a much less, um, high-traffic area, so we wanna do what we can to minimize it. Um, as you're looking through the packet there, you'll see a transportation route. One of the things we, uh, try to do is work with the local police department, and so, if, whenever a rig is brought in, work with them to have a police escort to help minimize any of those concerns. And then we also do it, uh, on weekends, at a ti, you know, try and do it early in Saturday morning, or sometime when, you know, whatever the traffic is a minimal impact for everybody. So, um, and then one of the other things, as you look through this, uh, one of the questions is, there was, we're anticipating about twenty-eight days from start to finish of get in, where our plan is to get in, just drill this well, run some log on equipment, science, and then plug it and leave. It's never, never complete, won't do any of the, you know, completing it or producing it, won't have any of those facilities, it's literally just a data collection. So, y'all have any questions, we just wanted to be able to, I know it was a little different, so wanted to have a chance to kind of talk with the council and see what questions or concerns you have, and be able to address those.
Sure. Yeah, so, um, so are you, uh, gonna use, uh, any kind of drilling mode or anything on this?
Yes.
So, we're gonna use a closed-loop system, 'cause the site's kind of small?
No, it'll be a closed-loop system, that's what we've.
So that we can control all the waste?
Yes.
Okay.
How deep is skinny well one going? Yes, exploratory, but?
It's exploratory, it's drilling down through the, um, Woodford Formation.
Okay.
So, it's, it's fairly deep.
Yeah.
Well, your package says twelve five.
Twelve, twelve thousand feet.
I thought that was deeper than that, okay. I saw the twelve five, but I thought it was deeper than that.
Chris, what, what do you anticipate in terms of H two S, if any?
We don't anticipate any, but we will take, um, precautions for that, to just be aware.
Because of location, it's a little more sensitive than one out in Sand Hill, so to speak.
Yes. Um, you know, we've, the wells north and south of it haven't had, typically, the H two S is farther west, so we haven't had any of that, but we will, you know, take a, you know, definitely, uh, take precautions for that.
You have other questions, council?
So, yeah, I have one other question, you know, we had a, uh, Dawson Geophysical, you know, did a bunch of work off around the city, did that not give you what, I don't know if that was you or who it was, but?
No, that, so the, the, the geophysical they worked, that it helps, but it does not give exact, we, we know the formations that we're targeting, they slope up, but we don't know how, at what the rate of the slope is. And so, think of it, if you've got, you know, you know your starting point, you're not exactly sure where your endpoint is, it's a whole lot easier, you know, more efficient and higher-quality drilling if you know that endpoint. Uh, the geophysicals have got to tell you more of, um, if there's any faults in there that you need to be aware of.
I see. Okay, just curious.
When you plan on starting?
Um, as soon as y'all will let us. You know, ideally, we'd love to be doing it right, already have started, so.
All right, gentlemen.
Exciting.
Is this, uh, is this gonna be put on the agenda?
It's gonna have to be put on the agenda, it's, you know, workshop, so we'll.
Yeah, we know that.
What is it, twenty-third, or whatever the next day is?
Yes, sir.
We'll let you know as soon as, you know, as soon as we know.
Yes, we, we just, I, I think Mr. Stretcher had said this is, you know, workshop would probably be the best way to address this first.
Absolutely. We appreciate everything, Jim, appreciate the presentation and the, uh, information. Uh, we'll be addressing this again next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, Agenda item number eleven, Discuss the issue. Oh, Steve, come up, I don't know, do we have any questions for Steve?
No.
I don't have any questions, Steve.
It makes my job real easy.
Not yet.
Not yet. Go back to read.
Just turn stopwatch off.
Mayor visited with Steve, and normally, we could say, it'll be on your next agenda, but we've got this new state law now, three business days we have to post, we're gonna try, but it could be the first meeting in October, we're gonna try. I know, I know the Arrington Oil and Gas, they want the next one, we understand that, we're gonna push it, Steve and I have already talked about it, and we're gonna do the best we can.
That's probably appropriate time to bring that up now, the, uh, everyone knows, you used to have seventy-two hour posting for Agenda Item. That was changed in this legislative session, now it's three business days. So, do the math, we, we meet on Tuesday, that means Monday, Friday, Thursday, we've gotta post it on Wednesday, which is, it just, it's a very short window compared to seventy-two hours, so. So do the math. If we meet on Tuesday, that means Monday, Friday, Thursday, we've got to post it on Wednesday, which is, it just, it's a very short window compared to seventy-two hours, so. Uh, we'll, if you have anything, it's our, meaning for our folks out in the audience with city employees, we have anything that needs to come to, to the agenda, it's gonna have to be on. We're gonna have to have, I guess, our meetings down on Monday or whenever the day you're gonna be meeting. We got to get it on agenda by Wednesday to have it on the, uh, agenda for the next meeting. So it ju, it just, from a time perspective, that's a, quite a difference, three business days. So it's something that we all have to consider and we all have to deal with when we're posting our agenda items. Thank you, Keith. Um, let's move to agenda item number eleven, discuss the issue related to the mobile food vendors and recent changes made by the Texas Legislature regarding having municipalities may regulate mobile food vendors. Keith?
Passing out the legislation that was, uh, passed in its last session, uh, it just completely, uh, changed how municipalities can regulate mobile food vendors. And it, it's a very long legislation, but Mayor, if we could, I just wanted to point out a few things. If we could just go to page three. Okay. It just says, uh, local preemption. This bill preempts local regulations. And then you start reading about what the city cannot do. And it's, we cannot limit the number of mobile food vendor licenses, so, uh, we just can't limit the number. We can't, and this is caused some, some issues across the state. We cannot address the hours of operation for mobile food vendors. We cannot restrict a mobile food vendor's propane capacity. Uh, I won't get into that, but it, the next one, it, number four. We cannot require a mobile food vendor to operate outside a specific perimeter of a commercial establishment. So if you own a restaurant, selling hamburgers, hot dogs, whatever, and a mobile food vendor pulls up next to you. The city of Odessa, city of Midland, no other city can require a perimeter, a distance. Where a lot of city ordinances did in the past, they required a mobile food vendor to stay so far away from a permanent structure. As of September the first, no, no more. And, uh, we can't require, uh, them to enter into an agreement with a, uh, permanent structure or permanent restaurant. And then I could just keep going, but C, D, E, uh, you know. And then there's another one. We cannot require a vehicle to stay in constant motion except when serving customers. That's your ice cream trucks and your snow cones. Most cities had an ordinance that said, you gotta keep moving unless you're serving the customers. Well, they can park now and li, in any zoning district there and operate, and their music will be playing. And, wow, and we get a call, there's nothing, there's nothing we can do. So, uh, just want you to know, and you can read the bill yourself, I can keep going through it. Another issue that has caught that we've discussed across the state is you can go get a fire inspection in Stanton. You can get one in Lamisa, you can get one wherever. It's good for twelve months, so they can roll into Odessa a week later. There's nothing we can do. That fire inspection covers the entire state for twelve months.
What about the health inspection?
Well, that's county and they're, and they're working on it. Uh, we met with them and, uh, they have a lot of concerns, but they're pretty limited too. And, uh, but I just, I want you to know, these fire inspections, they, they go to, and I'm not saying anything about those towns, but they go to another community to come to Odessa, they're in. Uh, and, you know, they go to Midland, they're in. They go to Lovick, they're in, so. Just want you to know, it's a big change and they keep saying in here that the cities can zone and it doesn't affect it, but we can, we can zone. We just can't do A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And so I, I really don't know what we're gonna zone, but, uh, we can sure look at it. Uh, but I just wanted y'all to know, and it is an effect as of September first, so. Uh, if somebody, that's what we got.
Prior to this bill, did the city of Odessa require a permit for them to have?
It is my understanding, yes, they did.
And now this legislation says we don't have, we can't do that too. Is that?
You know.
They either paid the state.
Yeah.
Permit, right.
Yeah, they're gonna go to, they're gonna go to state. And we, and then there's no, we cannot. We, the state may contract with us and, but they may not. And they may just, uh, do it on their own. If you've talked to the state, the health department, they're like, we got this new bill and we got tons of cities. And we don't have any more people. And so I, I don't know. Councilmember, I, I don't have an answer. And I, I really think this thing's just gonna have to work its way through and we're just gonna see, but. You know, if you have a, if you have a, uh, business and it's a restaurant and a mobile food vendor pulls up across the street or on the curb or whatever, and they pay their parking. Uh, or they don't violate the parking, they can, they can go. And there's, there's not a thing we can do about it. And whether we would want to do anything about it or not, I don't know, but we can't. And, uh, I've talked to, uh, a lot of people and cities are just, they don't know. Everybody's got different thoughts on it.
Gotcha. Why, why is the state legislature so mad at cities?
Councilmember Thompson, you, you raised a, a, a very, uh, good question. I don't know about angry, but it used to be, when I first started doing this. You, the legislature would pass, nah, three or five bills a session dealing with municipalities. Well, now it's, I'd say a hundred bills dealing with municipalities. And, uh, it's just been a total mind, uh, a change in the mindset with the legislature. Uh, they used to leave us alone. Basically, you said, you know, home rule city, you, you operate, you handle it. Well, that's not the philosophy right now.
Counselman, uh, Haney had a question.
I didn't, uh, um, Ted Stretcher?
Yes, sir.
Um, Councilmember Stoker worked real hard on changing the process and making an easement and making it easier for the vendors to get a license. Cleaned that whole thing up with the new Texas state law. I think you touched on it, but just for clarification, how much damage did it do to that, to what we did to make this streamlined?
Oh, I think, I think, I think the rules have changed.
Preempt, preempt our laws.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then there's a, and then there's another statute, which I didn't pass out, and it just starts off with, a, a person can sue if they are damaged or threatened to be damaged. Well, what, you know, that means, you know, so we're, everybody's gonna, cities are gonna be careful. And we just have to, we have to be careful. We don't wanna step, you know, step into it, but. Councilmember Thompson, uh, I just can tell you that there's a lot more legislation affecting cities now than I've seen. And, uh, I think cities like Odessa, Midland, Lovick, Amarillo, just gonna, you get, we're just gonna have to be more active down there. We're just gonna have to be more active and visit with our representatives, our state senator and present our side of the argument. That's what I think.
So I've got, kind of, two questions. I'm sorry, go ahead. Ms. Randy, go ahead.
Does this, some kind of, this beverage deal, is this included to take a now serve beer on the, on these trucks?
I don't think so. Is I, it, the way I read it, or read it, uh, T A B C and we're still gonna be okay. But to say for sure until this flashes out with the department and you read their rules and regulation, I, I don't know.
All it says is they can just go apply.
I understand.
They can go apply for a T A B C wherever they want to set up at. So if they want to set up next to a school, they can serve beer off of their food trucks.
From a certain distance from it, you know, 'cause other state laws control that, but.
Just giving you all the summary of this stuff.
But, you know, Councilmember Haney, I, I think you're right. Until we get some decisions from the department, when the Texas Department of Health, we don't know. Uh, we just don't, or I don't, I'll say that.
That, that's my question. And when I was working with Representative Langraff on this, this chapter was in there. And that was my question about, well, wait a minute. And it, it was explained to me that this had more to do with, you know, let's say the, the state is going to create a department to regulate this. They can't come up and say, well, here are the hours, here, here are the rule, blah, 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 blah. But when you get back in there, page nine, and then at the bottom of nine onto ten, it's, compliance with state and local law. A mobile food vendor shall comply with all state and local laws in the jurisdiction in which the mobile food vendor operates, including all fire codes, local restrictions, and zoning codes. So how would that section preempt saying that our zoning says you can't be there, our fire code says you have to be a sprinkled vena hood? How?
Read, look on page three.
Right.
It's in conflict. That's the.
It, it, that's what I'm saying.
Read that out. It's very clear. This chapter prevents a local authority's power to prohibit mobile food vendors in a manner that conflicts with this chapter. And when you read it, it, what you're saying, Councilmember, is correct, as long as it doesn't conflict with this chapter, but.
Well, so how can, in one hand, they say there are no rules, and then in the other hand, they say you gotta follow all our rules?
Cause there's three thousand rules. I didn't read them all.
Just, just the government?
Yeah, welcome to state legislature.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, you know, but they just say you're preempted unless, and you cannot have any rules and regulations that conflict with this chapter, and then you, you have to go from there. And that trumps everything else after that.
Yeah, it's gonna be interesting.
Well, and in that, the only thing we have in this list, mobile, number of licenses, we took that out. That's not a concern. We do have hours, so that changes. Uh, food vendors propane capacity, I think that's in, I don't know, that was always y'all's thing. Um, specific perimeter, commercial establishment, we don't have that. Uh, entering an agreement with a commercial establishment or a restaurant, we don't have that. Uh, the hand washing sink, you gotta do that. That's the health code. So, you know, I just remember going through these and really the only ones that applied to us were the hours. And I know at one point we're do, we were doing background checks. This kind of took that out.
I don't think our, our current ordinance allowed, uh, cities like Stanton, Lamisa, whatever, to set the standards for Odessa. I don't believe it did.
Right, but.
And that's what we're facing. And the other thing, Councilmember, is we might not have it today, but six months from now, council may want to do it, or nine months. Well, you don't have that option.
Okay.
Now, all I can say about it is I'm very concerned about our restaurateurs that, you know, that have, uh, substantial capital investment in their buildings. And, you know, uh, and I would hope, we'd hope that Chief Gerkey would call me when he sees a barbecue truck cross the street from Mr. Mitchell's barbecue joint. Cause I don't want to be on this dice when that happens. I'm gonna go the other way.
I just, I just wanna.
That's a real concern. I mean, it's, it's impacting people's lives.
From the way it's written up, it opened up the restaurants, so when they close their regular hours, they can open the food truck up.
Yeah.
And continue to serve through the night till the next morning, or however long they want to do it, till they open back up again. So they're in continuous business as a twenty-four-hour establishment with a food truck sitting in their front lawn.
We're gonna monitor it. You, you just have to think there will be litigation here or.
Oh, yeah.
And, or, and so we're gonna monitor it and we'll keep y'all posted.
All right, let's move on. Uh, agenda item number twelve, discuss the council retreat, council. We need to have one.
For what purpose?
So we can all get on the same page, set some goals, get staff some direction, and be able to have a discussion about, again, kind of goal-setting, strategic planning.
I thought we did that already.
I thought we did that in, in all of our, these meetings like this, is to set what, our agendas, to discuss the, this is what this meeting is for. That's why we, we set it up at three o'clock, so we can discuss everything, so we can get on the same page. We don't have to take trips out of, out of the city to discuss.
I don't think anybody said we're taking a trip out of the city.
No, I was just saying, we don't have to take a trip out. We don't have to go anywhere.
Well, since I've been here, I've never been asked, uh, actually what I would like done with the council. I've never been able to, there's been a few things that we've discussed, but I've never been able to say, hey, this is what I would like to see done.
Sir, you have, you can call anything onto this council that you want. All you need is one person to back you to get it on.
Well, I understand that, but I.
And so that's easy for you to do, so you're not, you're not handicapped up here.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know.
You have more authority, you have authority just like.
Okay, Haney, okay, okay. I just, I just felt like we've never sit and discuss privately among us of what I like to see done. Because I see money going to one territory all the time. I don't see it going to the whole city. I think, I think that, that, that's why I say maybe a little retreat or a private meeting amongst us. And I can say, well, uh, cause one thing I, I think is, you said, I know these people don't want to sit, listen to this, but I think that each district should have a certain amount of money to spend in their district every year. And not all two hundred million going to one district. Every, the whole city pays taxes. So I think we all should get a fair set of amount of money to spend in our districts. And I know all districts don't have the same amount of money in it, taxes being paid, but. I, I, all I would hear is one section. And I understand it's a growing section, but see, I don't want to sit there and discuss that and bore these people with that. But I think each council member ought to have, or each district, not the mayor, not Mr. Stoker, but each district should have a certain amount of tax money to spend in his district. If I got five million and I can do what I want to do with it to help my district, then that's what I, I, that's something I would like to discuss and have done. So a retreat, we can sit and say, well, Mr. Mitchell, you can't, we can't do that, or it'll take us to do this and this and this. We don't just always have to come to a meeting and find out, oh, well, I got a ninety million dollar street need to be done. So I think a retreat will give us a chance to talk amongst ourselves. And not, and not, and we can't never really talk because the two people can't talk, two or three people can't talk at one time. We need to have a retreat where we can all sit and do what we want to say, so it's not illegal.
So let me, let me weigh in, if you don't mind, Eddie. So what I'm hearing though is, is maybe a Saturday, we can get together and have a, uh.
We can go to Cowboy game, you know.
Or I like Cowboy.
I can't stand the depression of every law, so. I'm not doing that, but I do hear what you're saying. I, I think what I hear Eddie saying, that we need a strategic planning session, maybe to talk about, and maybe some of the master plans. For example, we have a master plan for almost everything, although they're out of date and I'm not sure we're following them. And I guess the question is, what does everyone have in terms of their own, uh, goals? What, where would the city need to be in a year from now, two years, five years?
See, Ms. Mayor, we coming up on our first year.
Yeah.
So I've learned a lot. So I've learned a lot sitting and talking to some of these people out there. I've learned a lot. We coming up on our first year, which now I think a retreat is good. We've all been together a year, saying, hey, look, we've learned this, let's move a little forward.
But make sure you understand, according to the open records meeting, we can never meet by ourselves and have a discussion. There's always got to be an open forum.
Right.
And, and, and that's just good, because, I mean, I think people need to hear what's best for District 1, or 2, or 3, or 4, or 5. I have any problem, I think that's, maybe a good idea. Maybe it's a good idea to look at, you know what's coming up, and for example, major project, for example, water. Don't pick on water for a minute, but we know we've got a potential, and we're gonna report sometime in the next month or two or three, about a wastewater treatment plant that may require more time than we can devote on, on a Tuesday afternoon. And we've got perhaps a new water tower that needs to be built. But if you, I think every district has a right to, to articulate what they see from a vision perspective, and I have no problem with that. I think we can meet a Saturday at, you know, the bar yard, or pick a place, I don't care. Uh, have lunch, you call any department that might have that special need, uh, or you want to ask them questions about some, you know, whether it be parks.
Hey, we have a new city manager.
Golf course.
Let's see where he wants to take us. You know, we, we haven't had a, 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 he, he's here. We had a temporary at first, you know, but we got a new city manager. Let's, let's sit and see what his thoughts are now. He's been here a couple, by the time we have this retreat, it'll be a couple of months. Let's see where he wants to take us.
It'll take two or three or four months to plan it, so, I mean, that's the. Funny thing, let me ask him, go ask for, Canal, Councilman Canal to weigh in on his thoughts on that. Are you favored?
I don't, I don't know. I, Public Works, um, the various departments, I, I have seen that they're going over here and over here. And I know at certain times, we all knew that we were going to get certain things in our districts. So there is some play like that. But also being able to voice your opinion for a particular need, maybe that hasn't been audible, you know.
Okay, I respect that. Councilman Vazquez.
I did what he said.
You know, then I think let's do this, if it's okay with y'all, let's start a calendar. I got Norma probably be in charge of saying, hey, how about this Saturday or whatever? I, I, I don't, let me ask y'all, some of y'all retired, some of us have more than one job. Uh, Christopher, you, for example, is it better on a weekend than a weekday? Yeah.
I, I don't have time during the week.
Okay, I respect that.
Weekends are better for me.
Okay, then maybe Saturday might be the best, and, but it may, um, I'm gonna warn y'all, uh, it may be January before we can get it scheduled, and because of, of, there's just conflicts already set for, uh, but that's, I think that's good, though. Maybe we had it last January, maybe once a year.
It's the beginning, though.
Yeah, maybe beginning of the year, it's a pretty logical time to, to meet and, and visit, so, um. Norma, I'll ask you if you don't mind starting a calendar search.
Yes.
For a good Saturday, for us to get together for a council retreat. And I would also bring it up to almost all the departments, if there's something you want to discuss, eh, tell. I guess tell Aaron or, or David, let's put it on the agenda. I mean, we, I think everything's open for discussion. If somebody wants a new, I don't know, a, a new, uh, fire station, or a new police station. Maybe it's worthy of, it's worthy at least hearing. I'm not saying any action, but at least we need to know what the dreams are, or the requests are, or the problems are. If we're gonna solve them, we gotta know them. So you guys out there and every department head, start thinking about your vision and your goals for the future, because we'll want to talk about it at the meeting. And so we'll have plenty of time, hopefully, for address every issue, whether it be department-related or strategic planning perspective. Okay, thank you, guys. Anyth, any other thoughts? If not.
I would, I, I would just say, one of the things that I, I did, I sat in on Midland's strategic planning update, and if you go look at their agenda, and the, the work session is not a good example, but each of their agenda items is tied back to one of their strategic priorities. And it just would help keep some focus on, somebody's coming to us and saying, you know, well, you know, our focus this year is a new police station, fire station, and, and park, and they're coming to us saying, well, we need a new sewer plant. Well, you know, sorry, that's not one of the strategic priorities this year, let's see how we fit it in. It just helps keep us focused, I think. It'd be very helpful.
And Mayor, I, I think from the staff perspective, I'll speak for staff, I, I think we need to have some direction on where we need to go in the next three to five years. And I think sitting down with a facilitator for an eight-hour period on a Saturday is gonna help us achieve that. And I think then putting together a report after, after the session's done, that we can go back to and look at and say, hey, you know, this is or is not in the report, so we're gonna do it or not do it in the next three to five years. I think that gives staff a lot of direction on where we're gonna go, and what y'all's priorities are for the staff, and for Odessa for the next, you know, three, four, five, six years. It's gonna help out a lot. It's gonna give us direction, it's gonna help us identify priorities. I think that's gonna be a good thing.
Thank you, David. I thank you for your words of wisdom. I would like to add that I would like, uh, southern-made donuts there with apple fritters. At least two for me, I don't care what everybody else gets. It always makes my meeting better when I start off with southern-made apple fritter.
Make sure we got a hand this.
Have Chief Cotton ready with a couple of ambulances for me. All right, let's go to agenda number 13, Norma, discussion of the boards and commission appointments.
This is super quick, council. The, uh, Public Art Committee, you, we will be receiving a recommendations from the Odessa Arts. They give a recommendation to the city council, and they'll come back with the names. These are the net, the, these people, terms are up, so we'll, um, get that, those names for the next council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to agenda number 14. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.101, the city council will hold an executive session, which is closed to the public, to discuss the following matters as permitted under the following sections of the Texas Government Code. A, Section 551.0072, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate located in Section 34, Block 42, Township 2, South Ector County, Texas, being a portion of tracks 3 and 4 of the Roy A. Minor subdivision. Millionaire subdivision, gotcha. Uh, the deliberation is an open, the deliberation in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with the third person. Subsection B is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Discuss economic development incentives relating to the following properties, legal description, T-2-S, Block 42, Section 01, comma, Block 420, Lot 000, and adjacent parcels between Grand Avenue and North John Ben Shepard. I'll need a motion for executive session.
I'll make a motion to go in executive section for A and B.
Second, second by Councilman Haney, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session at 4:19 PM.
Second, that was our second second by the Councilman, uh, Eddie.
Uh, we are now back in regular session at 5:19 PM. No action was taken in executive session. Uh, agenda item number 15, I accept the motion.
So will be adjourned?
The motion by Councilman Bob Sgast adjourned for a second.
Second.
Say by Councilman Canal, in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're standing adjourned, man.